Mr. Floyd, give me that meeting number. To the right, it'll say attendees. Where are attendees? Oh, just down there. I'll get it, I'll get it. Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Okay. Okay, here we go, gentlemen. This is a call to order. Notice was hereby given of this regular meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons for this Thursday, March 11th, 2021, at 6:00 PM at the courtroom at City Hall. We're gonna have an invocation, but first a moment of silence, and we're asking Councilman Robert Shaw to lead us in that. And we're asking Mayor Pro Tem Larry Prater, Councilman Larry Prater, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Shall we all stand?
Moment of silence, please. Lord, we just come to you now thanking you for your many blessings. We thank you for this opportunity to come together and to work together, Lord, as we try to improve our city. Lord, just, we pray that you continue to be with us at the meet and help us to get good solutions to our different items that we work on, Lord. We give you honor and praise also for what you do for us, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. A pledge to the flag, to the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Ms. Goldman.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Ms. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Locke.
Here.
Mr. Prater.
Here.
May I have a corner with Mr. Green, absent?
This meeting is now in session. Announcements? Are there any announcements by any of the council members? I have a couple. Back in, was that June, Ms. Goldman, when I made the request to enter into the agreement with Southern University?
Yes, sir.
June 9th, the June 9th meeting. You know, things take time. And I'd like to report that, all the Southernites out there, Eric, I know this is hurting you, for me to read anything about Southern. Is Eric in the building? Okay, I thought maybe he was here. The USDA invest $42 million in distance learning technology and telemedicine infrastructure to improve education and health, healthy, I'm sorry, healthy outcomes. That's, that is on the agenda, but I mean, it's, it's an announcement that, that is on the agenda that you see. We entered into an agreement with Southern University Law Center, Southern University Ag, and our goal was to put a, have a Southern University Ag center here in, in Morehouse Parish. And we recommended, and you all voted to allow me to negotiate and do what it took to get this for Morehouse Parish. So Morehouse Parish, Madison Parish, and I believe Tensaw, there are three parishes that are, that are included in this. And we had, the USDA announced this on the February the 25th or 26th, so there's a lot more to come. We expect great things from this relationship and this partnership that we have with these Southern University. Excuse me. Thank you. I also have a couple more announcements. Item. It's, it's item 12. I'll just deal with it in item 12 when we get to it. Okay, and public comments if they relate to items on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on any item on the agenda? You have a two-minute window to do that. Okay. Item five, approval of the previous minutes of the regular meeting, February 11th, 2020. What is your pleasure?
I'll make that motion that we approve the minutes from February 11th.
Motion's made by Council Lady Moore. Seconded by Councilman Prater. Any discussion, all in favor? The ayes have it, the, the minutes are approved. Item six. Councilman Shaw, Chair of the Finance Committee, the report, Committee Report, Resolution 21-1943, building claims for the month of February 2021. Councilman Shaw.
Mayor, we reviewed the receipts and also, Lord, the expense reports for December of 2020. And that's the motions from the committee just then.
Okay, so Councilman Shaw makes the motion. Seconded by Councilman Locke to adopt this Resolution 21-1943. Item seven, revenue expense report. Ms. Goldman, you have a comment?
May I just report in the acts as necessary?
Thank you. Item eight, Ms. Tamika Farah, broadband internet Louisiana connection municipal broadband. Ms. Farah, if you can state your, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tamika Farah. My address is 4590 Love Drive.
Okay.
I'm here with Louisiana Connected, and I'm gonna yield this time for them to talk about municipal broadband in our parish. I'll have Donnette Dunbar and the team come up.
Hello, thank you so much for having us. Do you mind if we do handouts?
We don't mind, we prefer that.
Thank you. Well, while they're handing out, I'll just introduce myself. I'm Donnette Dunbar. I'm the CEO of Louisiana Connected. I have a background in journalism, marketing, and public relations. My colleague Otis Ellis, has 30 years' experience on Wall Street. And my other colleague, Maurice Clark, is an attorney and a former treasurer for Marathon Oil. We're all aware that, you know, of the $1.9 trillion stimulus package that just passed in Congress. But there is another trillion dollars in economic stimulus that's sitting in the bank from 2020. And we expect that there'll be another trillion-dollar package coming down in terms of an infrastructure bill before the end of the year. We believe that based on all these federal dollars that are coming down the pipeline, Bastrop and Morehouse Parish is perfectly poised to take advantage of this once-in-a-generation opportunity to compete in a global economy. And we believe that what, in order to do that, you need a really, really solid broadband system. So what we're proposing today is to just talk to you about our strategy to build you a 21st century fiber-based municipal-owned broadband network that would connect every household and business to high-speed internet. And I'll turn it over to my colleague now, Otis Ellis.
Thank you, Donnette. Otis Ellis, and we're gonna be brief as we go through the presentation. So if you turn to the first page, we really just sort of wanna ground ourselves on what we wanna talk about. Ultimately is to create a public-private partnership to bring affordable, reliable internet connection to the parish of Morehouse and the city of Bastrop. Next page. What is broadband? Simply reliable, affordable internet so children can do their schoolwork, folks can work from home without any interruptions, and that swirly signal in the middle of your screen. That's what we mean by broadband. Next page. What is this system going to look like and why are we focused on broadband, I mean fiber? Fiber is important for a couple reasons. One, it's faster. Second, it's more secure, especially since there's gonna be a lot of sensitive data that's gonna be going on the system. We wanna make it secure versus wireless where information could be grabbed and used for anything. And lastly, fiber is the choice for businesses so businesses can get up and running and stay running. Next page. Since the pandemic has hit, there has been a lot of municipalities like Morehouse Parish that have decided that they are no longer going to wait for someone to come rescue them. As of last year, May of last year, there's been over 331 municipalities, localities like Morehouse that own and/or operate their own system. Here in the state, Lafayette, Louisiana, has had their broadband system for over 12 years, and most recently was awarded a $100 million fulfillment center from Amazon. So broadband can bring jobs and make Morehouse more competitive. And it's just not what's happening in Morehouse Parish. Some of the larger cities like Boston and Seattle have decided to pursue the same strategy of having and owning their own municipal broadband systems. Next page, some of the benefits. Before, pre-pandemic, said amount, around 1% of folks were going to their doctors or interacting with their doctors via their devices. Post-pandemic, that number is up, that percentage is up to 40%. And unless you are seriously injured, you're going to, a lot of folks in this country are going to be interacting with their doctor, medical practitioner via a tablet. We also believe that with our students who have, are behind because they don't have access at home and not driving to a parking lot to plug into the Wi-Fi, we believe that children who don't have internet at home, they're being deprived in education. We think this is a socially imperative project for the city of Bastrop and Morehouse Parish to utilize their own, to build their own system. I'm now gonna turn it over to my colleague, Maurice Clark.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate the opportunity. Talked to you all this afternoon. Again, my name is Maurice Clark, native of Baton Rouge and Sherwin-Cotton, graduate of Southern University, so I was very pleased to hear about those potential developments. But glad to be here today. I'm gonna first talk about the regulatory environment and give you a little bit of a backdrop of sort of the regulatory environment that we're operating under. Louisiana is, is really in an interesting spot from a regulatory perspective right now. You can almost say that it's in a bit of flux. And I say that because the, the, the overall governing body statute right now is the Fair Competition Act. And the Fair Competition Act was enacted to ensure that municipalities that actually regulate telecoms don't use that power to, 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 to an unfair advantage. And it really was enacted in response to the city of Lafayette constructing and building their own, their own system. There was a challenge, there was a Supreme Court case that ultimately allowed them to issue municipal bonds, and I'll talk a little bit about bonds in a minute, to build their own system. But they're actually the last folks in Louisiana to be able to build their, their, their system. But I think what we're hearing now, we're starting to hear that the future state may look a little bit different. There's, there's been some speculation that there may be legislation coming down the pipe that will open up, open up sort of more full-scale and allow municipalities to be able to, to build their own system on a more full-scale, scale basis. There are loopholes now that, that allow municipalities to build as long as they don't regulate telecom to, 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 to competitive advantage. The next slide talks about a private, a public-private partnership, which we typically refer to as a P3 agreement. And in a nutshell, a, a public-private partnership is just a, a cooperative arrangement between the, the public sector on the one side and the private sector on the other side. And they typically involve projects that are more long-term in nature. And it's really just an example of the government and the business working together to achieve and, and, and develop a, a, a project. Again, particularly, they're focused on mostly long, long-term, long-term projects. It's a good collaboration tool. It takes advantages of, of the strengths and the weaknesses of both the public sector and the private sector. Typically, on, on the government side, you don't have the necessarily, necessary skill set and expertise to run some of the specialized projects, particularly on something as technical as broadband. But then on the other side, the business side, the business is disadvantaged with respect to the ability to raise funds. So the municipality has the ability to, to bring to bear, you know, a cost of capital that is much more, much more competitive. You can see on the, on the next slide, sort of what each, each, each side will provide in, in a typical public-private partnership that, that would probably entail a project such as broadband in Morehouse. On the public side, you typically see them grant some type of access to their right-of-ways, access to their buildings, and then also facilitate any approvals that would need to be put in place to, in order to facilitate a project like this. And then also importantly, be able to assist in, in issuing municipal bonds to help fund the project. And then on the private side, again, bringing the expertise to design and build and operate the system, maximize funding sources, do all the marketing, the, the legal, and then the maintenance. And then the important piece of it is, is to lead the, the workforce and business development efforts in order to train up and build a, a local workforce that can take, take over and operate the system once it, once it's built. Now, I will say, in, 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 in being transparent, there's, there's one downside to, to a P3 that, that we have seen. And that is around the, sometimes you can, you can, you can enter into them, and then the infrastructure and the services costs will escalate on you. So you ended up, you end up going and, and saying, okay, the project's gonna cost X amount, and then you secure your, your, your funding, and it ends up being a little bit more. So my advice is if you're gonna go down this path, make sure that you have the adequate funding in place on the front end, in case you run into those issues. Working with a project in, in Houston on, on real estate construction side, and what we've seen on, on, on real estate construction over the past nine months, costs and materials have just escalated. So the agreements that we put in place nine months ago, a year ago, have to be amended and have to come in, because again, looking at just the cost of timber, for example, it's almost tripled over the last, last six months or so. The next, next couple of slides talk about funding. Before we get into the slides, let me, let me, let me take a step back and share with you sort of how we think about funding and, and, and these type of arrangements. I, I really think about the sources of funding and really a priority, looking at a sort of a waterfall, the initial, most important priority, and then working its way down. So looking at the three primary sources of funding in, in order of the, the, the most preferential, grants are at the top. Again, because the grants don't have to be repaid. They certainly could have obligations on what you can do with that money once you get it, but there's no obligation, there's no interest component, there's no obligation to repay. So that's, that's the, the highest priority. The second is, is debt financing, and that could have different, different levels to it. Again, in prioritizing within that subgroup, municipal bonds has a higher priority because you're able to issue bonds and issue debt cheaper than you can in, in, in the private, private market. I'll talk about the type of bonds that we would envision for a project like this with, with y'all, but that's typically where, where, where you would prioritize it. After the municipal bonds, then you could have sort of what we call right, right way, or, or normal way bonds, or debt that you would issue in the private markets. Again, it's, it's more expensive than, than you can issue in, in, in the municipal markets. And then final, the final piece of it, the third piece of, of that, again, that, that funding waterfall is private capital. And that's the most expensive piece of, 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 of funding. Again, because you're gonna have to build in returns to be able to justify folks making that type, type of investment. So what, what we, we envision, and I think what, which makes the, the broadband opportunity attractive for, for, for Morehouse, is that unlike some municipal bonds, revenue bonds are repaid solely from the revenues associated with the system. So you don't have to worry about the, the, the assets of, of the community, or of the city being attached or having, or having the, the bond proceeds repaid from the general obligations. So because you do have a revenue stream built into a project like this, then you could dedicate those, those revenue streams to go first and foremost to repay the, the bonds. And again, that, that helps isolate the, the city from, 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 from any of those obligations. So that's, that's in a nutshell. I'm gonna turn it over to, to, back to Otis. He's gonna talk, talk, talk to you about the, the cost of the system. And we'll be around afterwards to, to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Rick.
And so while we've, we've done a preliminary, very preliminary overview on what the cost of the system would be, and that's gonna be anywhere from 18 to 42 million dollars. And the range is so wide because it's going to be a mixture of wireless and fiber. The more dense parts of the city, fiber would be the preferred choice for build-out. When you get further out into the parish where there's less density, people are farther apart, wireless works better. And so this is a number that will obviously change, which is why we've given such a wide range. And if you all decide that you wanna get into a partnership with us, we will be fully transparent on what those costs are. We provide you with milestones as we're going along until we, till the design is approved, and then we break ground. And relative to the system, it'll take us anywhere between six to 18 months to build a complete system where residents and/or businesses can become subscribers that will be able to have various speeds. We're aiming for one gigabyte at under $80 a month. And with all the federal subsidies from the Universal Service Fund to the Low Income Fund for low-income families, we believe that there's never been a better time for the city of Bastrop to undertake this, this project. And so I'll turn it over to Donnette, and she will conclude.
Thank you so much for having us. We invite you to go to our website, LouisianaConnected.com, to learn more about us. But before I go, I just wanted to leave you with this quote from Dr. King. "We are now faced with the fact that tomorrow is today. We're confronted with the fierce urgency of now. In this unfolding of conundrum of life and history, there is such a thing as being too late." We really believe that every child in Bastrop that has little or no broadband is effectively being denied an education. Dr. King is speaking to us across generations that we cannot wait for others to fix that. We would be excited to work with you and the parish to bring high-speed and affordable broadband to your community. Thank you so much for taking the time to have us.
Thank you all for coming back to Bastrop. We thought you were coming last time, remember? But things happened with the snow, I mean, the ice and all of that. And Larry, it's good to see you. Yes. But thank you all for your presentation. Now, the next step, I believe, would be to get to appoint maybe three councilmen to, or two councilmen, I can't, can't appoint three. And I'm looking for volunteers to research this. I proposed something like this in 2006. The city of Rochelle, Illinois, it was called a hub city, and they had developed a, a, a network that was city-owned. It was a city-owned utility. And I don't know whether anyone remembers that. Mayor Hawkins, Mike, Mayor Hawkins and I talked about it a lot back then. And we had Cap Rock come through here with, with their fiber from, from Little Rock down through Bastrop to Monroe, along the interstate to Dallas, back up to Oklahoma City, and back to, back to Little Rock. And they were one of the first to lay fiber, of course. We are a progressive administration here, and we want to really fully investigate, okay? Look at all the pros and cons, and, and hopefully in time we'll come back before it's too late. Yeah, before it's too late. We don't wanna, we don't wanna be behind. Go ahead. Thank you. Just speaking briefly to that, if, if people pay attention on the building, the council gave me approval to, to a partnership with LSU. That antenna up there is a, what's called a COR antenna outside on the building, looks like a little spaceship. And there's a device in the police department in the back that's in the concrete, I mean, that's in, and it measures the gravitational, gravitational pull change of, of the earth. And it affords, they needed a station, and, and I petitioned them to put it right here on City Hall for several reasons so that we could get precision with the Internet of Things coming, with, with not being left behind to make Bastrop more competitive. We now have the precision of one inch, GPS of one inch, plus or minus one inch. That, that station, and in fact, we had a, a letter from LSU commending this administration for, for doing that. I think it was in the Bastrop Enterprise this past time. But if you will read the article, because we are doing all we can to get ready to make Bastrop not be left behind when looked at. Okay, thank you for your presentation, and we will, if there are any council persons that would like to serve and communicate, we have all your information. Mr. Ellis, Mr. Clark, and everyone, Donnette. and communicate, we have all your information. Mr. Ellis, Mr. Clark, and everyone, Dinette, we will talk.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Southernite.
Yes.
All these Southernites, man. Okay. Item nine, Ms. Mayor Hawkins, streets. Ms. Mayor Hawkins wants to talk about streets.
Good evening.
Good evening. And state your name and address.
Mary Hawkins, 1419 Austin Lane. I came tonight to talk about the street.
Yes, ma'am.
So one of the streets I want to do is one of the streets from the inside of the city limits. I know I got to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
So I got a contractor here, well, owner, and I would like him to come up here.
Okay.
And what we wanted to do is to have one street to do. Y'all permission for us to do one street, whole street, to the repair it, but we do not, we'll do the free labor.
Okay.
Oh, listen to me.
We're listening.
Okay. And but what we do not want is nothing to deal with the city on doing the work. We want to do the free labor ourselves.
Okay. Let me ask you a question. Please introduce yourself, sir, and welcome to Bastrop and welcome to this meeting.
My name is Kate Ofta Flowers. I live in Bastrop on 8721 Council Road.
Okay. All right. Naturally, the city of Bastrop starts out with engineering. Every street that we do, we did a, let me give you a little history. The last administration, every 10 years, the city of Bastrop gets about $5 million. We have a tax renewal that raises $5 million over 10 years. That's been standard. And the city council gets to pick the streets that they want to do. And the last administration picked and they had, we have an engineering firm. Everything that we do has to be cleared with our engineering firm. You have to do plans, much like these plans right here. We just can't go and do streets, but this is what plans look like. And they have to be, and they have to be looked at and approved by an engineering firm, an FE or PE, a professional engineer, civil engineers have to. So you have to first start with plans that has specifics about grade and material, and the materials have to be inspected. The materials have to be inspected. Now, I have a daughter, Marcia, who runs the lab in Baton Rouge, and her lab inspects every concrete and every paint for the Huey P. Long Bridge and all types of stuff. So there's a lot to it, but it starts with developing engineering plans. You have to have these in order to do. So you have to have an engineer. And the engineer has to, first of all, go out and shoot the grade and all that and look. And then you have sewer under the street. And that's what makes it tough. We have sewer underneath the middle of the street. And it's buried like, I was over and I went down to a sewer line just yesterday, it was 10 foot below the surface. So it's not just the surface of the street that you're looking at. So there's a lot to it. But if you hired an engineer and if you got the plans and if you got with Denman Engineering, it's a lot more to it than that top layer of asphalt. We had the pipe burst. Much of the sewer line was rotten under a lot of these streets. We did four million, the last administration, I went into Denman Engineering, of the $5 million, they had phase one and phase two. Phase one was $3.8 million. That left $1.2 million for phase two. All right? So that $4 million did not pave 7% or 5% of the streets in Bastrop. We got about 212 miles of streets in Bastrop. If you put them in the end, they would get you into Texas. Okay? If you took every street and put it in again, it would definitely get you a long, 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 long way. That's a lot of streets. And so this administration honored the wishes of the, they let the councilman pick streets in their own district. I believe Councilman Charles' district got 40-some percent of the money. And it was, you know, Councilman Prater, where'd you get, Larry?
Probably about 2%.
Okay. Well, see, Prater was short and there were certain communities that were short. I didn't like the streets. There were streets and I won't call streets because I don't want to impersonate any past councilmen, but I thought that Henry Street should have been in it because it's a connector from 165 to Martin Luther King. I thought that Hickory Street, is this Hickory here? Yeah, Hickory? I thought, because it's a very popular thoroughfare to cut off behind Shamrock MJ's and come straight to this intersection right here. But the council had spoken and we were, I was not going to recommend to this council that they undo what that council had decided. There were some streets paved, for instance, right beside the church where I go, Manning Street, that I didn't agree with because there's only about 30 cars a day, maybe traffic in that. We had some other streets that led to residential that, where you don't have 25 cars a day, that were paved and that, it cost, the price to pave Henry Street from Martin Luther King just to the townhouse, that's as far as we go. We don't even go to the townhouse. We go a little bit. And then you get in the parish. A lot of people think that when you, a lot of people just say, oh, the streets are terrible. But they don't know that the city's limits on Pearl Street is right past Pearl Street Church of God. And you can tell because time you get out of city limits, the potholes are that big. So what I'm saying is, is that this is very, very, very complex. And the only way we could grant your wish is that you got an engineering firm to engineer the streets and they, they are civil engineers and it's not possible that we could grant such a request. It's just not possible unless, now, the cost, I had Denman Engineering, well, first of all, I looked at streets that were left out. Now, here we were, we had a, when we finished phase one, we had $1 million, about $1 million left, Ms. Gold? Okay. So Denman came up saying, when are we going to do phase two? They've had several meetings. You know, engineering companies and construction companies want to spend your money. But I said, no, we only get $5 million every 10 years. So I asked this council to invest in a machine that will give us almost permanent repairs. It's the best system in the world. And they did. And we have the best system in the world. Of course, we've gone through hurricanes and pandemic and asphalt, asphalt supply going down for several months. And there are things that happen. But what I wanted to do was have something to address the 93% plus of streets that were not included in the phase one. And I said that we could not afford to do a phase, phase two, which would cover two streets. The price I got from Denman, from the townhouse, you know, before you get to Pearl Street on Henry, because city limits is there. And back to Martin Luther King was $450-some thousand, a half million, to do one street. So the critical decision that we have to make is, we don't have enough money to pave Hickory right here. We don't have enough money to pave Henry Street. All we have is enough money to fix potholes and we're trying to fix them right. Coal mix, throw it in, first rain, few, you know, that's what the parish does, they throw and go. I was looking at Merton Bow. I had to go out to Merton Bow yesterday. And they just threw and go, they put coal mix in, pack it down the best they can, and those potholes are right back in three or four months. So to fix streets, we take it very seriously. In fact, I have something on the agenda now where I asked in 2019, I asked the federal liaison, you got the Federal Highway Department, and then you have the State Highway Department, Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development. The federal liaison, Ms. Mary Stringfellow. I met with her. In fact, she was in training and she trained us. And I got the emails here from her to another gentleman. And we asked, we had a serious meeting with them and told them how serious we were about our streets and our parks. So we got the National Park Service to develop a master plan, free of charge. We got a grant for that. And we also asked to be included in a study. The State Department of Highways is, they're doing a study and they had three communities that they were going to do, three parishes. We were so aggressive that they recommended to take one of those parishes out, and I won't name the parish, and not do another parish, but do the city of Bastrop. And I'll read this email where we are the first, they're going to do a study and they're going to use Bastrop because we lob it to get this. And we're going to get a free study that's going to serve as a blueprint for all other cities. And as they do us first, then they're going to go to the second and they're going to perfect a little bit more what they did in Bastrop, where we're going to do complete streets on Elm Street. We're getting Elm Street. The state, we swapped a portion of NAF for Elm Street. Elm Street is a state highway. And people think that every road in Bastrop belongs to the, belongs to the city. We don't own the federal highways, 165 and 139. Somebody tagged me on Facebook about something on 139, called me a lazy ASS, okay, just two days ago. And they can't read those shield signs, they're federal highways. So we got attacked over and over for federal highways, state highways, 830-5 is Elm Street from the Collison Road to where Subway is, where, Ms. Woodson, Van Avenue. Van Avenue is a state highway from the light at Bastrop Food, going west to Larch Lane, turn on Larch Lane one block, and then Van all the way out to Pleasant Drive. We swapped the state Van and that's Highway 830-3. We swapped them for NAF. They want to do something like a bypass. We don't have the money for that. In the swap, we got a deal where they're going to resurface those roads. And I've got the, I've got the stuff here. And this study, I had Randy Williams, Randy Williams, who has the center on Elm Street, Randy sent me pictures. I said, Randy, every time you see somebody out there walking and about to get hit, you take a picture and send it to me. So we are showing them that that's an unsafe thing. And in 2009, the state of Louisiana adopted what they call Complete Streets Program. And in Complete Streets, they do bike and pedestrian, okay? Just like the Martin Luther King Street Bridge, we're going to have a six-foot bike and pedestrian walkway. So it's really complex, my dear. It's really complex and we can't, we can't just grant it and say, let somebody go out there with some asphalt and just do it. It's not possible. Everything we have to do has to do with standards and it takes a, it takes a civil engineer with a license who passed the PE and FE exams, the engineering PE and FE tests, and they stamp this and sign it. So it's not possible. Your heart's in the right place. Your heart's in the right place and it's pure. But it's just not possible. But, you know, there are other things that we can do. I didn't want to talk too much, but go ahead, Mary.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it? Okay, dear. But look, I'd like for you to serve on, if I get elected, I'd like for you to serve on some committees because you have a lot of talent that, and I'd like for you to serve on committees if you have time. Maybe the street thing, that's one of your passions, tearing down houses and beautification, that's another thing. You and I have talked about that. The problem is, we only have $30,000 a year in the lot clearing budget. And my council reminded me that I spent $20,000 of that a year in a machine that's got the mulching head on it because I knew we had to clean up the lots, even though we didn't have money to tear them down. So that's the entire budget. And that one machine for four years, four and a half, five years, tied up the budget unless the council. Now, these people appropriate and legislate, that's their job, to legislate, make laws, and to appropriate money if it's in the budget. So we want your ideas and, you know, I love coming, coming and working around you guys. The last time you were over on, what's the name of that street, Mary? Forest, when you and Barry were tearing down a house?
Oh, okay.
And I got the sludge hammer, I got a scar right here from something falling with a nail and it hit me. So we enjoy working with you. You're a tremendous asset to the city of Bastrop. Okay?
Okay.
And we love your ideas.
We appreciate your effort.
Yes, we do. Okay, we'll talk. Thank you. Item, item 10, Mr. Mark Moore, open parks for kids. Hello, Mr. Moore, how are you doing?
How are you doing?
Great.
How y'all doing? Mark Moore, 118 North Odom, across from East Madison Park. Trying to find out when, do you have a date on Dixie baseball? I know you, y'all got plans. I know you, I know y'all was out there cutting trees down, pitches. I know you're trying to get it ready, but do you have a ballpark date on opening up?
That depends. That depends. As you know, Mark, we have, this administration was able to get 100% debris removal. Every tree, like the one on the house at Popeyes, we got hundreds of those around Bastrop, I mean, hundreds and hundreds. And our objective to get FEMA assistance, it took, we don't have a large public works department. Parks and Recreation and sewer, not sewer, Parks, Recreation, Cemetery, streets, the mechanic shop, you know, our mechanics fix all the fire trucks and every vehicle that the city has. And we went to a different approach where we had teams rather than having these people assigned strictly to parks and that's all they did, and these people assigned. We could not afford that. We were over budget. Last year, we spent $100,000 more than we took in. And that's because we had to absorb costs that should have been covered years ago, like $127,000 for these plants for the Martin Luther King Street Bridge. That came out of streets. We could have bought $130,000 worth of asphalt, okay, and fuel and other things that we spent $145,000 on moving the sewer over from.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, but I'm talking about the parks. All the other, all the other parish, Sterlington, eight minutes up the road, they have their fields ready. We've been having our fields ready for 40 years, 30 years, however long you want to. I understand about stopping, getting trees off people's houses, wherever you decide to take the debris, but still, the kids still need to play. Everybody around the parish is playing. You go look, I can drive eight minutes and show it to you.
Yeah.
Buster Pies playing.
Yeah.
Big Miss playing.
We understand.
They playing and they making money off our kids. So all I'm asking you to do, and I know y'all working on it, we had a standstill with debris, I guess. I mean...
Let me ask you something. Do you support the approaches of the ABI force? Yes or no?
It ain't no yes or no.
No, I'm saying...
No, no, it's not a yes or no.
Okay.
But I do support it, but not right now. We've been getting our fields together for years. We could do something like unsolved murders. We need to speak on that, on all these shootings going around.
We'll take one thing at a time.
Well, you asked me a question, so I'm trying to ask the same thing. I think, I think really the crime rate is what we need to be working on instead of it, parks and all the other stuff.
And we are. We are. But go ahead.
But I had meetings with you about that. So that didn't, that ain't working. So all I want to know about the parks, I want to know about a time date when Dixie, we could play ball, get our kids. Other parish stealing our kids, moving out of here, nothing for the kids to do. I understand Corona, I understand all that. But if they can do it, we can do it. On the other hand, on the other hand...
Neither of those towns you mentioned, except Ruston, Ruston has a $36 million complex. They have a lot more money than Bastrop. They've got a university there. Sterlington is not... Sterlington is not recovering like we are from two hurricanes. Sterlington's, you see, the parish takes care, well, Sterlington City voted to spend $16 million on the complex.
They, I think they was in a negative like $2 million one time, I thought.
Yeah, but they, the voters came, and the difference was 211 to 218. So those six or seven people that voted, nine people who voted yes more than no, is the reason that that's there. If those people, if four of those people would have said no, Sterlington wouldn't have anything. So it comes from funding. The answer to every question you're asking is money, okay? Money and the distribution of labor. So with two hurricanes, we got hit with two hard, first time in the history of Bastrop. And our priorities were to take our public works resources, our people, and work with FEMA every single day. We work with FEMA every single day. They track what, yes?
I'd like to ask, how many hours, how many days would it take for your end to step away from the tree?
Well, first of all, you're out of order. Come up to the microphone, Ms. Pat. Ms. Pat, come up to the microphone. Mike, do you mind sharing?
Yes, you can.
A little bit worse?
Yeah.
And the answer to that is, I can't right now, we have a construct, a company, a debris removal company, we had a meeting yesterday with them, they're gonna be here Monday, we're doing disaster recovery. Everyone else has recovered to where their lives are normal. We have to do FEMA stuff every single day. And FEMA, we don't have the manpower. And let me state this, we can't, I had a meeting with our, with our insurance agent, when was that, Ms. Goldman? Mike was here. This week?
Last week.
Oh, that was Friday, Thursday, last Thursday. We have, we have to take instructions from our lawyers and from our insurance agency, I mean, our insurance provider. Our insurance provider don't want us to have 37 people out in the park and somebody stepping a hole and sue the heck out of the city.
Yeah, like that hole that you told me a few months ago that was fixed, yet from the highway, I can still see a cone in it.
Okay, well, see, somebody could step in there, that proves my point. Someone could step in there.
Because you said it was fixed.
Well, I was informed that it was fixed, but go ahead.
Also, every time anything's come up, whether it's new expensive equipment, or it's cleaning things up, I hear a lot about these minimum wage workers, that's your favorite word, minimum wage. Well, these minimum wage workers, I've watched them work, I've watched them sit in the truck, I've seen one get out while the other one's sitting in the truck and watch them. Take those that are picking up tree limbs and clean the parks. Take your day, take your two days, however long it takes, those two days, give to the parks. He is right. I have a grandson in Calhoun, he's starting his games next week, he's been practicing for weeks, he's not alone. They are not big municipalities, Calhoun is a small area, they managed to have their kids play. We have the parks, all it needs is those minimum wage workers that you love to talk about, get out there and clean those basins up.
How many?
And then they can play.
How many? How many workers would it take?
You say it only takes two?
No, what's the machine?
An exclusive toy that you want.
It's not a toy.
Or replace how many?
Wait, look, we don't have to be derogatory, it's not a toy. It's a machine like a cotton picker.
I know, I've seen your toy.
Yeah, I pick cotton, it's not a toy, no more than a cotton picker, that you see one man driving and picking 20 acres a day. And rather than.
My grandparents did, and I played in the cotton fields and picked cotton for fun too.
Yes, ma'am. And a cotton picker is a good idea, and it's not a toy. It's the same, it's the same scenario.
You're wanting an expensive toy that some big city.
It's not, it's not expensive.
Yes, it is.
It, Ms., Ms.
And you can't even afford minimum wage workers to clean the parks up.
With all due respect, and I'm gonna, we're gonna end this conversation, but with all due respect, Mark's SUV costs more than that machine.
I got a question for Ms. Pierre. Mr. Pierre, is there any kind of way we can do a waiver for, you're a lawyer, you're a lawyer, any kind of way we could do a waiver form to people that wanna participate to help clean this stuff?
Whole harmless agreement, you mean?
Either way, Mr. Pierre.
We're gonna get, we're gonna get.
Mr. Pierre, I'm asking Mr. Pierre.
You don't get to do that.
Mr. Cotton, I.
Wait, no, but, no, look, wait, look.
You said you brought your lawyer in, you brought him in here.
I'm just saying, you don't, that's not proper.
I wanna hear your answer, I asked my lawyer too.
You can make comments, but you can't ask questions in a public meeting.
So, Mr. Cotton, do you?
I asked that question.
Yeah.
I asked that question. Can we, do we have a waiver that people can sign that participate?
And go to work.
Signing their rights.
If they have workman's, look, we have, we have what's called workman's compensation. Do you know what workman's compensation is?
That's your lawyer, Mr. Cotton.
No, but you can't ask him questions.
I asked a question, I did. I can ask a question. Ms. Pierre, would you answer, please?
Do we have a waiver?
Yes.
Could we get one?
I prepare a waiver if the city wants a waiver.
Right.
So, so you're gonna get people to hold the city harmless?
That's what a waiver is.
The question is being asked, I'm assuming was Mr. Pierre, Ms. Moore is asking me, I'm assuming to be in conformity with the question that was attempted to be asked from the podium, was that, you know, is there such a thing as a waiver of liability and responsibility? And there is a whole harmless provision for which a person can sign not to hold the city responsible.
Thank you.
Can they sue after that, Mr. Pierre? Have you ever seen anyone sign a whole harmless? Because that was the discussion, it happens all the time. In our FEMA meeting, in our broadband FEMA meeting, the idea of getting logs from people's property at the back of it to the front, the discussion was with lawyers about whole harmless agreements, and they had many, many cases where people said, oh, just come get my wood from the back and take it up there, and then when they scrape up the yard, the people sue to get the yards done.
We're not talking about.
No, it's the same, same scenario.
No, we're talking about.
We're gonna fix the, we're gonna fix the.
So he just answered your question, just say you don't want no waiver, you don't want the help because you want us to sit around and keep on, you wanna pay politics with our kids.
No, don't tell me what I want.
You're talking about a machine.
I have grandchildren that I want to play.
That's.
I have Madison and Harmony. All of my children have played forever in the Bastrop system. So don't say what I don't want, and don't try to read my mind that I'm trying to do something, because you, you can't get in here.
But you always do it, I'm just putting a little medicine back on you. But anyway, I ain't playing no games, anyway. Mr. Cotton, when are you gonna open the parks, goes back up?
We'll let you know, we'll let you know.
Can I make a motion that we open the parks at least by April 1st?
You can make a recommendation to the administration.
Can I make a motion, Mr. Pierre?
You can make that motion, I mean, it's a motion, they get a second.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we get those parks open by April 1st.
Second.
Thank y'all, thank y'all so much.
It's all.
That motion, that motion is out of order, but go ahead.
The lawyer said it isn't.
Okay.
I'll go with the lawyer.
Go on and vote. You're gonna take the liability?
No, we're gonna do waivers.
They're gonna sue me.
They know how they're gonna sue you.
Ms., Ms.
We're gonna do waivers.
You should have run for mayor, you should have run for mayor.
I should have.
Yes, ma'am, you really should.
I should have, get the other people on in there.
That's fine, that's fine.
Well, the thing is, y'all, we need this park safe, okay? We need to get the trees out that are rotting out there over our.
We cut some already, Robert, we're cutting them right now.
But I'm saying, we need to take a strong position on this and make it happen, but if we, otherwise, we'll sit here and do this all of the time.
Robert, we're, we're gonna do it. On the agenda is the ABI force, it's not a toy, it's not a luxury.
We're not doing it.
We are, because I could take two people and assign, rather than bringing six or eight over there.
I made a motion that we try to, we get these parks open by April 1st.
We're already trying to do that, Ms., Ms., lady.
Well, you wanna give him a date, Mr. Cotton, that's not right.
The date is, it's dependent, I can't give a solid date, I can't say, just like I can't give a solid date on the, on the, on the bridge opening, rain.
I know it.
You know, rain, weather, there are too many variables.
Everywhere else, but.
I have grandchildren that's in the system.
And I have grandchildren too.
And I want them to play as bad as anyone. No, ma'am, you're out of order, please sit down.
I have a motion, Ms. Moore.
Okay, second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for your motion that we do that, open them up. But I'm not gonna open them if they are not safe to play in. If they're not going, if they're not going to play, if they're not, if it's not gonna be ready, we're not gonna, I'm not gonna give the order.
So you're, so you're not.
Yes, right ethics, right ethics. If they're not ready and safe, if they're not ready and safe, I'm not gonna do it.
Well, we need to get the people working.
Ms. Moore, shouldn't that be up to the head of the Parks Department?
Whether he's safe, yes.
Not prepared?
Yes, I agree.
Well, I want the parks open as bad as anyone. And I've said 17 times, I went back and looked at the videos, I said, if you do, if we do this, they will be open, and I knew we were gonna be having this discussion where you try to make the mayor the villain, over a $34,000 machine, and your car out there is a $900,000, $100,000 car and one per.
What you got to do in my car?
I'm just saying, individuals, individuals buy things three times this, we're a city, we're a city, and for this council to say that a $34,000 implement.
Because we have people that's been working 20 years, you have the city making $10 an hour.
That doesn't have anything to do with a 30, $34,000 machine.
Put money to the employees, I have a problem with that. Just pay our employees.
Put it on paper and show me a pro forma.
I can't.
You never do, you're always talking, you never, you never put anything on a spreadsheet. You're always talking about making things work, but you don't have to do it, I have to do the pro formas. I got, I have to do the.
But all I'm talking about is paying these employees what they deserve. If we have $34,000 to buy a machine, just pay our people. You wanted a $235,000.
$34,000.
Wait, I'm talking, you have, you wanted a $235,000 cemetery plot.
Plus public works, plus public work. Almost every worker in public works have gotten a raise.
No, no, you're wrong.
Okay, who, okay.
I'm not gonna say her name, but you're wrong.
I said almost, almost, almost everyone has gotten a raise in public works.
Ma'am, we need to move on with that question.
Yeah, and, and you didn't, you didn't vote to expand the agenda to cover that either. Okay, so that item was not on the agenda.
But the lawyer is saying we, I mean, you are a lawyer now?
Get a waiver this before, the waiver form.
Get your waiver form, but that is not on this, on this agenda, and you didn't expand the agenda. In order to do that, you need, must expand the agenda, okay? It's not an agenda item.
We can move on, ma'am.
Okay. Let me state, I have three granddaughters that play ball, I want them playing, but I want them on a safe field, and it's ridiculous that this council will balk over $34,000.
I want to pay the employees, please.
Ma'am, that will not go, that's a drop in the bucket when it comes to salaries. $34,000 is no money when it comes to salaries. That's, that's, that's one.
You keep talking like I don't know management and budgeting, that's what I do. This is what I.
Put it in a spreadsheet, put it in a spreadsheet, put it in a spreadsheet, ma'am, give it to me in, in writing, nothing's in writing, it's always a lot of words about, about credentials and what you can do.
I do have the credentials.
Well, put it in a spreadsheet, take the payroll.
Managing budget.
Take, take the payroll and do it, Ms., you never give me numbers.
I'm in love.
Okay, Jesus.
He can be here all night.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, thank you, Mark Moore, thank you. I want the parks open as bad as anyone. Resolution, item 11, resolution 21-1942, amending resolution 19-1842, approving the approximately 47 acres of undeveloped land located west of Martin Luther King, north between Hamilton Avenue, Shady Oaks Street, and Haynes Avenue as a planned development to include a tract of land designated for light industry. Mayor Hawkins, Clarence. Do we need to repeat this? Okay.
Good evening, members of the Board of All The Persons, Mayor Cotton, members of staff, ladies and gentlemen. I simply came to answer any questions that might be relevant to this topic. I appreciate, first, the consideration, we've met several times with planning and zoning to get this addition to this particular category. I need to first apologize to Mr. Locke because that's his district and I didn't talk to him beforehand, negligence on my part, it's not a big matter. We, in an effort to improve the capacity and availability in Bastrop, in addition to having multifamily and single-family housing in what's normally called, usually called the Dotson plot, the Dotson property behind the Dotson Park, we want to also include that, be included in that for light industry, light clean industry. We're working on bringing businesses to Bastrop, but because Bastrop is laid out as it is, it's hard to have a, other than industrial park, it's hard to have industries in communities, and we're being particularly concerned to be sure that if we do have light industry in the community, it's compatible with the residential piece that will be there. Because, because of the competition in industries, we have not spoken about what the industry is, but it's something that would be compatible, something that's urgently needed, and especially during this time of COVID and this pandemic, it will be fulfilling a need that, that's not being met right now. I'll entertain any questions other, without divulging too much specifics.
And, and Mayor, the area is not heavily populated around the edges, and there's plenty of room out there, it's the largest single tract that's undeveloped in the city of Bastrop, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions with Mayor Hawkins?
Mayor, could you describe what you're talking about, like, business? Because I envision this being a compromise between light business and residential.
Well, it wouldn't be retail, it would be manufacturing, but clean manufacturing, something that CDC, FDA, all those acronyms approved, it would be medically kind of related, environmentally related, something that's internal, it won't be having any emissions, it won't have smokestacks, it won't have noise, it would be like having an old neighbor next to you, you probably won't even notice there. Appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions?
Eventually up to 200, there are phases of it, one, one part of it is manufacturing
and the other part is assembling. So hopefully, we're targeting 200 jobs and the training that goes with it. In fact, I had a meeting this afternoon, this is not my project, I'm representing BDT Housing. BDT Housing is also the group that's building the farm labor housing off NAF Street, so it's a nonprofit out of Mississippi, Ms. Tracy Prince, and some of you have met and talked to, Mr. Mayor has had conversations with them before, and as well as the staff here. So this is one of the projects, and I guess because I've.
And it's a good project.
Yeah.
And clean, as Clarence is saying.
Yeah, because I've been around and contacts and all that kind of stuff, they asked me to help them get and find.
Mayor, let me ask you one more question.
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't you say that time is critical?
Time definitely is, there are opportunities. President Biden just signed the, the COVID bill that has all kinds of money in there for projects that are designed to eliminate and deal with pandemics, to help people be restored as far as incomes lost and jobs and all this, and this pairs directly with this COVID relief bill, and it's, and this is just the last step. The Planning and Zoning Committee has heard it more than, more than one time, we had to do some exceptions, compliments to Ms. Teresa Holmes, Teresa Holmes, because she's been excellent in helping us find and define and refine the zoning ordinance to find the compatibility. This is in complete compliance with the, with the zoning that the city of Bastrop has.
May I move that we approve that 21-1942?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Hawkins. It's been owned by Councilman Locke, seconded by Council Lady Moore, that this be approved. In discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
As have, congratulations, and please give my regards to Ms. Prince.
Thank you very much, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your service.
Yes, sir. Item 12, resolution 21-1944, authorizing the mayor acting in the name of, instead of the city of Bastrop, to enter into an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development to participate in the LPA pilot program for the local public agency documented transportation plan and process project for a feasibility study on streets in the city of Bastrop. We've been chosen, I've got the emails and I'll share them with you. I'm sorry, which one you want, Harold?
Oh, I'll leave it.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. This was. Oh, okay. All right. Okay. This was, it's a series dating back to twenty eighteen when I started this process in Baton Rouge and a meeting with the federal highway liaison with the state of Louisiana. And I've got a letter here, Dear Mayor Cotton. That's great news to hear. What I did was wrote them, they, they narrowed it down to three, and, and it came down to, just as a matter of history, it came down to, when they selected the three, and Bastrop is the only city, this is to study every intermodal, I mean, any, any type of transportation, whether that be bicycle, pedestrian, automobiles. We are getting a complete study free of charge with the consultant working for the Department of Transportation and Development, doing a thorough analysis and making recommendations that we can then take and hopefully get grants, infrastructure grants during this COVID period. We're, we're gonna have an, an infrastructure bill that's gonna come out of the United States Congress and the Senate that the president is gonna sign. I thought it would be done in the last administration, but they didn't get, completely get the infrastructure bill. And we need to be ready, and this will give us shovel-ready projects. And it says, it says here, I wrote, because it was competitive, that we had swapped Elm Street and, and Van Avenue, and that my fear was that we would not get the complete streets as, as, as outlined in law. So it says, Mayor Cotton, this is from Jason Duette, transportation planner, section eighty-five transportation planner for Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, says, Dear Mayor Cotton, that is great news to hear. I will schedule the city of Bastrop as the first pilot community. I have a meeting with the consultant that is developing the process documented tomorrow, document tomorrow, at which point he will try to finalize a draft document and develop a preliminary schedule for the pilots. We should be in touch soon to schedule a kickoff meeting. Thank you again for volunteering to participate in the development of this problem that will hopefully go on to assist local public agencies in the future. So I'm asking for permission to, to engage the Louisiana Department of Transportation and engage this, in this study with the consultant. It's a, it's free planning for the city that we could never afford.
I make that motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Council Lady Moore, seconded by Councilman Locke, that, that this resolution be adopted. In the discussion?
Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, yes.
I did talk to Marshall Hill, who is the district manager for about nine parishes.
Yeah.
And he wasn't aware of it, but he was gonna get into it, and he would be.
I'll give him all the, I'll give him all the information. Yeah, it's gonna come down from the top, and, and they'll be notified. But I'll, I'll share with him the, the information on the study. Okay, any, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you so much. This is major to us. And you're gonna see complete streets and, and all types of wonderful things happen for the city of Bastrop. All right. Item thirteen, resolution twenty-one dash nineteen forty-five, authorizing the mayor to make a grant application through rural development, United States Department of Agriculture, for funding to repair the old ditto building to help grow agriculture business by expanding operation markets and customer base, creating jobs and increasing the producer's product. As you know, we did a very successful year-long feasibility study that was funded by the United States Department of Agriculture through the Delta Regional Authority, and we grew plants for a year in the cold weather, in the hot weather, in the garment plant, and that's called aquaponics. We brought it with a firm out of Houston, RST Bioscience, you can look them up. This group won the Michael Bloomberg Award recently for global planning out of Houston, and it's, it's Jeremy Peaches and Robert Harding are the principals, and they are partnered with Ms. Ashley Armstrong, Harper Armstrong's daughter, as, and they've been working together for over a year in, in actually planning this project. We want to be an agriculture center, and this ties into the Southern University partnership that we're creating through, will have Prairie View A and M, Southern University, University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff. They are strong on aquaculture. That's the raising of fish. Aquaponics is a combination of raising fish. When they poop, they fertilize the plants. The microorganism cleans up the toxins, and you filter, you, you recircle it to water. So aquaponics is, this will be the largest aquaponics farm, if I'm re-elected. It'll be the largest aquaponic farm in the South. It's three and a half acres under roof down there, and this project is gonna get funded. And here's the problem. I need the, I need the resolution because the grant application is next week. No, but we have, this just came down. Kay King's familiar. Kay, are you there? It's the one with the SBA. You know the SBA that Mary Kirk? Didn't she include you in an email? Okay, yeah. Well, that's the grant, but it's got a deadline like in a week. But it's, it's just like another grant that we wrote. So we should be able to, to get it done. But I'm not a hundred percent certain that we're gonna do it, but I want the authorization. Because if we don't do it in this round, then, then. That was just a study. That was just a study. Why wouldn't you eat any of that? Did you eat, did you eat some of that lettuce?
Did I eat it?
Yeah. You wouldn't eat it either?
I tried to give it to Howard.
It tastes like something you get at the Waldorf Astoria. Nutrient-dense. I was the only one would eat the, eat the lettuce. Okay. But that's strong aquaponics. We, we will have a, an agriculture center here that you won't believe in just a few years. Okay. Any questions, or can I get a motion? This is just authorizing us to apply. Yeah. Okay. If we don't have a second, we can't do it.
I'll say.
Okay, thank you, Robert.
And here's the thing, though, without knowing it by hand, you know, we, we're not sure what we got.
We, we can always not do it. Yeah, yeah. We can always not do it.
But I hope the building is substantial enough to handle all this.
Well, that's a great question. That's about all the building is substantial enough to handle. The garment plant was designed with a four-inch floor and a low ceiling. It's not like the building that we were at when we opened the AAA housing manufacturer out at the other day. It's not like that building where you got a ceiling, you got, you can get small cranes in there and move stuff around. The garment plant was not designed for a forklift with ten, five thousand pounds on it, okay? It would break the floor. That building was designed for people to stand on eleven hundred seamstresses and sew Jordas jeans. So it's a very limited use that we can do, but it'll make a heck of a greenhouse. They've stolen all the wiring, all the air conditioning, all the heating. Everything's been stripped professionally out of there. I mean, they use precision tools. I don't know how they didn't get caught, but they stripped everything out of there, and it was professional. So it's very few things that you can do with a building like that that was a single-purpose building. And it would make, I'm gonna ask Kay, Kay, would you agree?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So it's, it was a single-purpose construction, and there's not many things you can do with that building. We can't, you know, people say tear it down. I've had council, councilmen tell me, you need to tear it down. Well, when, when I proposed that, this company wants to put their headquarters here, RST Bioscience. They wanna move here, but they're waiting until after the election. So that's true.
Previous motion.
Pre, okay. It's been moved in, moved in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you for the permission. I've got one thing that, that I need to say. Right now, I had this for, I'm gonna give this to each of you. Howard, can you, can you give that to Howard? Can, Robert, can you give this to Ms. Moore? Okay. I meant to do this in the, in the announcements, but I wanted you to know this, that this is, and I'll hold this one up for the audience. Drainage. You gave me, this council gave me the permission to apply for grant. There's a one-point-two-billion-dollar watershed initiative that, that the state of Louisiana received from the federal government. Half of the money, six hundred and seven million dollars, went to ten parishes that were most affected by the, by the twenty-sixteen flood. Washoe Parish is the only one in North Louisiana that was adversely affected, and they share, those ten parishes share half the money. That left six hundred million dollars for the rest of us, the other, it's not fifty, it's not fifty-four parishes, because all sixty-four weren't included as damaged or in qualifying. But the other forty-three or so parishes are competitive, and this is all science. So McManus engineers have assisted the city because you were kind enough to go along with my request to try for inclusion in this watershed initiative and compete for this money. So the parish is responsible, Morehouse Parish is responsible, Stalkenhead Creek. Stalkenhead Creek is what we call the pup ditch. It starts over around the fairgrounds as two little, little creeks, and it builds as it goes through town, crossing Cleveland Street, Mcfee, and crosses right here under the biodock. You know, and it's the pup ditch, all right? And it meanders around, getting larger and larger as it goes. It's our largest, it's our largest drain for the city of Bastrop, largest canal. And that's the responsibility of the police jury. So the police jury in nineteen, nineteen seventy-one, seventy-two did a dredging and a major deal. They got right of ways to do the whole thing. So we applied under the police jury's plan to do Stalkenhead Creek. But Stalkenhead Creek does not take care of the flooding problem. We have flooding continuously over in the Unity Street area and in the Eden area. And so I got with the engineers, and we have, I asked for twelve million dollars worth of projects. We're only gonna, in this first phase, in this first, phase one, this first round of funding, I should say, in this first round, we have what's called catch basins. And I came up with a design to build a catch basin down south, off of Hendra Street, Sugar Hill area, Mr. Locke, that break that the, that's, that's south of Mr. Raven's house, that break between there and Hendra Street to do, to do a lake, a catch basin, you can't call it a lake, but a catch basin that when, when it rains and the water's running, and trying to get out of here and backing up, that we'd have a place to catch it and then release it slowly because one of the main, main factors of the watershed law is that you can't adversely affect people upstream, and you can't adversely affect people downstream. Bastrop is on a hill between the Mississippi River Valley and the Washoe River Valley. At Marouge, it rises up, up the hill. We're on that plateau. And we're at a hundred and sixty-nine feet above sea level. Monroe is at seventy feet above sea level. So we're a hundred foot above Monroe, and if we clean out all the canals, water would rush down there quicker, okay? And adversely affect them. So the catch basins is part of the, part of the process. But here, if you look at this, and you orient it, here, there are three main, three main proposals. Here's Horse Bia. You see the long one out?
I'm trying to figure what, where it's gonna drain to.
Okay, now. Oh, well, okay, you're talking about Stalkenhead?
No, the catch basin.
The catch basin would be right on the pup ditch, on the, on the ditch, Stalkenhead. So as, as the ditch, as the ditch would run around there, Stalkenhead runs around by the townhouse, okay? And it goes up closer to, you know, where the, it comes, the bridge just past the townhouse. If you're on Hendra Street going west, and you pass the townhouse on the left, right past Pearl Street, that bridge is Stalkenhead Creek. It's flowing sort of west-northwest, okay? And it flows, and then it comes back around and makes a southern turn, and it, up where Mr. General Caldwell used to live. It crosses the road again, and then it crosses Nav Street. It crosses Nav Street and goes on out to a, a by La Fush, okay?
But that's gonna cause a flooding down by Stalkenhead.
No, no, it will not cause flooding there. The catch basin is, when the water comes by, it would be pumped over into, or spilled over into, they'd have gates, and it would fill up the catch basin to keep the water from running downstream. So, well, we're not dealing with the catch basins tonight. That's the second part. We, I decided to take that out because the money is limited, and I didn't wanna say, give me twelve million dollars, when five million dollars might be available. So this is a five-million-dollar part of that. And let me give you this. If you look at each one of these, would you pass one of these to Mr. Locke? And would you pass one of these to Ms. Moore? Now, tomorrow's the deadline. Tomorrow is the deadline, the absolute deadline. And this is what, you gave me permission to, to do this. So with tomorrow being the deadline, we sent this in yesterday on the tenth, and you see the, in item four, you see to the right, Ms. Moore, item four. It's a five-million-dollar project to, so we have, we have Horse Bia. It starts over south of the Cooper Lake Road, close to the municipal center, okay? And it, to alleviate the flooding there, and that's the big black thing. It's two, it's twenty thousand feet in length. That's four miles. So we'll have four miles of work all the way up to Shelton, up close, around the, it'll go around the south side of the North Pond and empty into, into the Bia. It'll also help out flooding up at the North, North Pond also. Okay? Now, this is built on science. It doesn't matter who your cousin is, or who you know. This is strictly a scientific project where the science has to work. So that's one. That's four miles of, of getting that drainage. The one down here on this, on the, on the bottom here, this is the Unity Street drain. It's one mile in length, okay? And that's to get water into the Stalkenhead Creek cleaner so it will not back up on Unity. You know where Unity Street is? Whose district is that in? Your district? Well, I'm trying to get you a mile of, okay?
I hope so, that I don't poke in too old to move.
We, we, I've been working on this since I got in office, Mr. Prater. And then we have the Eden Canal and the Arctic Drain, which leads into, into Canal W-ten, and W-ten comes down and joins Stalkenhead Creek by the Ford Place. You know down where the Ford dealership was? That, that, that bridge? That's Canal, that's Canal W-ten. W-ten joins Stalkenhead Creek before it crosses Hendra Street where Mr. Caldwell. Those two come together, okay? W-ten. W-10 comes together and it joins Stalkenhead Creek.
Mr. Pratt?
Yes, sir.
Are you saying all of this will alleviate the flooding in there?
According to the science that I've studied, it will.
Okay, so that's, that's.
Okay. And it's, you know, I'm, I want to compete for $5 million. And, uh, the science worked. We got this approved on the first round. We got in the first round clearance that the science met the standard, and now we're competing for the money. And we gotta have some more science and some other stuff in there. But, um, Randy Denman's been working with us on it, and so has McMinnis, who did the police jury. And we're doing this part through McMinnis because they did the police jury's, uh, McMinnis engineering. So I wanted you aware of that because the deadline's tomorrow. You gave me permission some time ago to do it back in 2017 or 18, when the, when the watershed initiative was announced. So I just want you all to know what's going on, and I appreciate your yes vote on that. Okay.
Number 11.
14.
Yeah, 14.
14.
Let's go, you wanna change glasses?
14. Discussion action. Permission to purchase one ABI Force Z-23 SLT, laser-ready with twills, in order that we can have the best parks, because I want to bring in Barron Park into the park system so that we could have tournaments. We don't have the manpower to do, to put labor on all of those parks. We don't want to discriminate and just do Carter Park. We want Dotson Park. We want every park to be ready to play ball. I believe in a comprehensive approach. I hate that I don't have agreeas, but everything that I try to do, I'm trained to try to be comprehensive and not do piecemeal stuff. Now I've asked for this for 10 times, and the parks would have been ready because we could have assigned two people to get on that, just like one person can drive a cotton picker and pick a whole lot of cotton, whereas it takes a 25. And the thing that I, I want the council to realize, and anytime you want to come look at the numbers, you can come to my office and I'll show you a spreadsheet that analyzes the, the pay. The Democrats, Biden and, and the Senate and the House is going to raise the minimum wage. I don't mind providing jobs, but we are not the employer of last resort or first resort. We, the more, the more efficient we get in our departments, we can have less people doing a bigger job. It's just like a cotton picker, and we got nine different fields to pick. And you can't do that by hand and have people doing potholes and cemeteries and all of that. It's putting a strain, and it's only about $34,000. People get mad at me when I say it's the cost of one minimum wage employer, employee. Once we pay for it, it never goes on sickly. It doesn't stand around, like Ms. Pet was talking about, it doesn't stand around and hide in a truck. It doesn't do that. It doesn't complain. You get on it, you can put blindfolds on and drive it. It puts a laser plane over the field, and it's got a pole on the, on the implement that controls a mid-mount implements that automatically adjusts as you drive it, and it'll give you a perfect field. Right now, we are doing it eyeballs and people judging, six guys down there trying to judge, and then you got, you have a rain and a river flows through your park, and now you got trenches. And then you can't play, when it rains, you can't play the next game. That's the end of it without getting employees out there. And I hate that this is such a lightning rod. And it's not a toy. It's not a luxury. If we had this machine, we could take in Barron Ball Park, which is a major league style. My vision is to have Barron, and we'll have, uh, public address out there, and we'll have, da-da-da-da, da-da. They can get their popcorn, we'll have concessions, we'll bring back the old-time baseball where you're playing on dirt. Other places are playing on turf. Dirt is better and safer. Dirt is preferred. You can slide in second base and not get hurt. This machine aligns the infield with the outfield so there's no lip. It's safer for our children. They'll get less injuries, and it's only like $34,000. Well, and Ms. Moore, I apologize for impersonating, but I was just admiring your beautiful truck, okay? You got a dynamic truck. And I take the price, they a hundred and some thousand dollars. I'm just teasing, okay? Okay, take a joke, take a joke. Okay, but all I'm saying is that individuals spend more, if you went looking for an SUV for $34,000 than an individual just doing a paycheck. And we act like the city is not able, and that's just not true. We saved over $40,000 last year on swimming pool, more than this thing costs. The money is sitting there. Don't speak, Ms. Goldman. The money is sitting, I'm just, okay, no, I'm just, okay. The money is sitting there. We didn't open, we did not open Dotson Park Gym. We didn't have two employees sitting over there. We didn't have all those utilities going in the summer like we normally have. That gym is a monster. It's an energy eater, and it, we didn't have those expenses. And all I'm asking this, this council to do is open your eyes and your senses to the fact that we can be more efficient. I'm not a hater. I have grandchildren that play. I don't, I didn't want Matty to lose a year of development. I got a granddaughter just posted, posted a, a video on her Facebook, and when she runs, she's fastest little thing I've ever seen. She runs and dust kicks up behind her. So, so I want that. I'm being painted as the villain. Oh, the mayor's a villain. He's against children. That's a lie. That's a bald-faced lie. I am not, it's, it's, it's a lie. It's a bald-faced lie. Politics, you can call it whatever you want. It's a lie. A lie is a lie. I have grandchildren that are not playing, just like your children aren't playing. And I've always been pro-sports. So I just, I'm just asking this council so that we won't have to bring six or eight people over there with all the things, my, our insurance company advises us not to do what's suggested, and that's get a bunch of people out there with rakes and holes, and somebody chopped somebody's toe off, and then we got a big lawsuit. I'm not going to subject the city to that kind of exposure.
But we can't get a grant for that since it is so.
No, we can't get a grant for machines, Mr. Prater. You can't, no, sir, we can't get a grant for it. It's not possible. But there are payments on it. All of us are forwards. I'm the only one that don't buy new cars. I, I don't, just don't buy them.
And last time I bought one.
Well, me and you, Prater, you know, you, me and you together, we, we like those $4,000 cars.
Exactly. The bank?
So, so all I'm asking for is that we purchase this machine so I can assign two people to keep up all nine parks. And the, the fields will be perfect. They'll have a slope, a three-degree slope, or whatever slope we tune in from the pitcher's mound. You tell it where your GPS, where home plate is and where second base is. And I bet if you went to New York, New York, New York Yankees, wanted to buy one, and Derek Jeter, Robert, you were on the webinar, right?
I've been so long, I don't remember.
Yeah, you were on the webinar. I'll play it if you give me permission. I'll play it to the public.
I am giving permission.
But I know, but, but they, but Robert was on the webinar where they, the machine was demonstrated, and everything was positive. I just wish that the council would see the light on this. Either you're right or I'm right. Either I'm wrong or you're wrong. Well, that's an opinion without knowing even what the machine does. You, you all did not investigate this. Nobody comes up with a rational answer, rational. No one comes up, and everybody hates machines. I've never seen anything like it in my life. But we could have had the parks open if you would have granted this nine months ago.
Mayor, don't, don't blame, don't blame.
I'm stating what I know from my perspective. That's not, I'm the one that sends the crews out, and we would have had it open. I'm the only one that can say whether it would have been or not.
Parks and Recreation, Mayor should be heading that.
I'm his boss.
The mayor should be doing everything.
That's your opinion. Ms., please, please, ma'am, please.
Please, can you call for a motion?
Do we have a motion? Every time you fail to do this, you delay, you delay the situation.
No, we're not, we're delaying the.
Ma'am, 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 please.
We are not delaying the process.
Ma'am, if we had the machine.
No.
I could put two men out there.
You could have been there in the parks, ma'am.
That's your opinion. Please.
It's not our fault.
Yes, ma'am. That's what you say. It's your opinion. Yes. The, it failed for a lack of a motion, Ms., okay? Ms. Holmes? Okay. Appointment of an interim police chief has, our time elapsed.
Yes, sir, we can only do a ninety day.
Ninety days, yes.
And the ninety days, the end of this month. Would you, they said you could just go and really appoint him again for.
For ninety days, yes. As I stated, there's an election going on, and I did not want to appoint a chief of police that another administration, if that happens, would be stuck with. I'd like for that administration to make that decision. If it's us, I know what I would do, but, uh, and, and I'm hoping that we have several police persons that can retire right now and decimate our force. We have several, uh, dispatchers who can retire right this minute and decimate our force. We are trying to recruit. We have gone to Grambling. In 2017, I took the chief and assistant chief, Ms. Lenore and Willie Parker. We met with Dr. Singh, who's chairman of the Criminal Justice, Dr. Montgomery, Janisch, I mean, not Janisch, but George Montgomery, who's a PhD, and we came up with a plan to recruit from Grambling and to recruit from, but that wasn't followed through. Chief Evans, if you, uh, he's talking with George Montgomery right now. We're gonna recruit heavily. Grambling's largest department is Criminal Justice. The chief of police, an African-American female of Dallas, Texas, is a graduate of Grambling State University's Criminal Justice. They turn out great people who, who, uh, are in the field. It's their largest, and we're also meeting with Louisiana Delta, Delta Community College. They have Criminal Justice also. And so there are plenty of people who will borrow money and get on student loans, and things, things get tight, and they'll, they'll, they'll stay out of work or need jobs, and we can recruit these, some of these individuals. We're not excluding other people straight off the street that with no college. Now, I'm not trying to say that, but that's a premium recruiting ground.
The mayor, I believe that we, uh, uh.
Anthony?
Anthony for another term of, of, no.
Thank you. That's a motion. Been moved by Councilman Shaw, seconded by Councilman Locke, that, that you accept my request to appoint assistant chief, uh, interim, he's right now interim, interim chief, um, Anthony Evans, John Anthony Evans, for ninety days, up to ninety days. Any discussion, all in favor? The House have it. Thank you for your positive vote. Discussion action. Raise employees, raise of employees of the police department. Even though we're a Larson Act, uh, Act, uh, city, and the mayor can raise raises, can raise employees raises if they're not, uh, like Ms. Goldman, without Ms. Goldman and chief of police, those appointed officers that stand before you every July 1st, and we reappoint you, vote on. But other employees, that's not there, the mayor, if you read the, read the Larson Act and has the, has the authority to grant raises. But I don't want to do this without you. So I'm asking you for your consent from, uh, that's raised for employees of the Bastrop Police Department. I've run the numbers. Here's what we have. When we had 26 policemen in 2017, and we dropped down and lost policemen to a force of about 22, 21, 22, we actually spent more, about 260,000 or so. You remember the number, Ms. Goldman?
I don't, buddy. It's a lot in other terms.
Yeah, but we have, what we have is we got captains. When, when a patrolman goes on vacation, we have to fulfill, fulfill a shift, so a captain will come and work under another captain. And then we're paying overtime at a captain's pay, which is a lot higher than, than a patrolman's pay. So that overtime is, is, has been decimating us, but then if we gave a raise, I could not make the numbers work, except that we got a little money under the CARES Act that will, that will sustain us. Now here's what's gonna happen. When you got a smaller staff and somebody go on vacation, somebody get sick, we gotta have a captain come in and field that third or fourth person on the shift. And there goes the budget. So if we didn't get that little money from the CARES Act, and it's, it's, it's according to my figures, this is what's gonna happen. Our cost is gonna go up initially because we're still gonna have captains working, uh, and I'm proposing a dollar and 90 cents an hour raise. It's, it's, uh, it's 28 hours in a year. That's 40 hours a week, 52 weeks, that's 2,080 hours. So a dollar raise is $2,080. So this is a pretty substantial raise. And with 190 would put us on par with other police departments, and people are turning us down, not because of our benefits, but because of our pay. Now what's gonna happen is, and I can show you the regression that I did on this, it's gonna increase, it's gonna increase, but as we add patrolmen, it's gonna start decreasing. So here it is now. It's gonna increase a little bit, but we got enough CARES Act money to sustain us doing that. Does this make sense? And then as we hire patrolmen, we won't be having those overtime costs with captains working, uh, on shifts at a time and a half. And then as we add patrolmen, and when we get six or, when we get, when we cross, when we cross about three point, some number of patrolmen, that's when we're gonna hit this, this sweet spot. And then from there on, if we get six people, if we add six people, then we'll be back to normal, and our savings will be tremendous. So if you all want to see the numbers, then, uh, I'll share with you the numbers, but, but, uh, but I've run the numbers on this. And only be, if we didn't get the little CARES Act money, we wouldn't have a little bump. We'd go way in the hole with a raise. So that's why we couldn't do it before. But now the opportunity presents itself, and we can do it. So I'm asking for a vote of confidence, uh, from the councilman. I don't think we need a motion for this because it's not a, it's not a real.
If there's discussion and action.
Well, the action is, the mayor can take the action because the mayor has the authority to do it, but I want, I, I talked to you individually, but I want the public to know you support it. So, uh.
You're gonna come out with something for the common, every day, hurt people with?
Yeah, we, no, we haven't left anybody out. Ms. Goldman's crew have not had a raise. Several of the public works, we have smaller public works, uh, personnel now than we've had because we've gone to the team concept where we have machines, and it don't take 12 people with hoes and shovels on it, shoulder to go do something. So we've got machines. We've got the skid steer. One person, two people can go on a lot. Michael can take the skid steer and clean a lot, all the, all the brush and vegetation out in one hour. A 50 by 150-foot lot, he takes that mulcher and he just goes. We, once we had six people out there with hatch, hatchets and chainsaw, and all that stuff eating up, eating up, uh, well, never mind that. But, but. But I'm asking for, Robert, what's your, what's your position on this? You, are you for the police getting there?
Yeah, I wonder if we, uh, might, uh, wanna, you know, go through it, uh.
Yeah, I wonder if we might wanna, you know, go through it for another month, if you're comfortable, that's...
Well, I told the council a long time ago I wanted to do it and if you all had questions, you should have, you should have asked. I've run the numbers. So, go ahead.
The budget that y'all passed and did, this increase is already in this budget.
Right.
In the budget.
Yes.
It's already, it's no additional money.
Okay.
It's already in this budget.
That was gonna be the question.
Yes.
I'm in support.
Okay, so Robert, you?
And that was a dollar ninety percent.
Ms. Moore?
I'm in support.
Good. Mr. Locke?
Yes.
Mr. Prater?
I'm in support. We took out some other people.
Mr. Prater, Ms. Goldman, haven't we given raises to people in Public Works? Most people?
We, we have gave raises, yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Why, why have non-employees received raises?
Because it depends on what they're doing and their performance level and what we're...
You're the mayor's assistant.
Well, yes, ma'am, we can, it's not, they're not civil service employees. We have employees who drive trucks and drive equipment. We have mechanics. The mechanic shop stays empty now because we got good guys over there who do things. So we didn't make them stay at eight dollars and nine dollars, we moved them straight up to what the other mechanics were making because they're efficient. So efficiency gets, lets you keep your job here and do something more important and make more money. So we've been doing that. We hadn't kept those people over there at seven dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. We just don't do it blanket, but it's done individually. It's, we can do merit there depending on what they do. You know, mechanic or a person with a CDL license that, that someone else wants to hire. We wanna keep those employees. So thank you for that. Um...
That's the roof.
Okay, item seventeen, discussion action, permission to advertise for bids to replace the roof on and paint the city annex to driver's license building.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion made, motion made by Council Lady Moore, second by Councilman Locke, that we do that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good. Ayes have it. That is done. If we could just get someone willing to make a motion to adjourn, if any, you move? Mr. Locke, move. Second by Ms. Moore, that this meeting be adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.